Oh, you can do every.
And so. It's kind of a nice deal, I think.
Nice, and I like that.
I see, and now it's like, kind of like. I want to, I want to speak.
Everyone's still listening to me at work.
I just don't think I'm.
You don't have the music way up loud, so.
No. Red Mill too, and then, then I'll be like singing.
I don't want to go.
It is, it is too early.
See, well, she and I were show tunes. So that's.
In a good way.
Other joke.
Sunday again.
He would never run to the show too. Usually like. Okay, like, that's embarrassing.
For a long time, we would do, you would do a big man carry in Jeopardy, and then we'd switch from Red Mill to Vice. You got a half hour.
Yeah.
I lost. When I first smoked, and I lost that twenty five pounds, from what I had.
Well, there's something to watching a show or a movie or something that just takes the monotony of.
Yeah.
All right, guys, six o'clock. Stand and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under one. And indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, the revised agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Would like to comment on the revisions. Um, I would, I would suggest that if we're gonna revise, if we're just changing the order, that we don't just keep sending out. A revised agenda and that we can make the adjustments here before the meeting. Versus getting multiple, I guess I'm being selfish a little bit, but instead of getting multiple agendas, multiple different. Downloadable documents, I guess.
Fair enough. So if there, if something needs to be added, it's cool, but if it's just an adjustment, you'd rather, okay. Noted. Right, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 All right, so right off that, was there anybody signed up online, Blake? Nope, okay, uh, so protocol for addressing the board, uh, which is the first time I think ever I don't have in front of me. Wow, no, not really. Uh, Rachel Shaw? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
She's a little scared.
I don't bite. Okay, um, well, good evening, school board members. My name is Rachel Shaw, I am here tonight as a mom and a youth member, youth mentor and an executive board member of the Prosser Boys and Girls Club. So I just wanted to thank you all, um, for allowing me to address the board tonight, and I would like to speak in favor. Of discussion item that you have before you, six C for the, um, lease agreement. So as many of you know, the city of Prosser entered into a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club in May of two thousand ten. Um, and we did that to provide services to the community for at-risk youth. Since that time, the club, um, staff has operated out of the city building. That's located at eight twenty-three Park Ave, that used to be the home of the administrators, um, staff, and, um. During that time, because there was lack of space and lack of funding, they, the club was only able to. Offer services to youth between the ages of six and twelve. So since then, the club has grown immensely. Um, and thanks to the school district, um, we now have a teen center that is operating out of the white church that Jenny and I just came from, the pub mentor. Um, it's a great space, but again, we've outgrown the space, and so. Um, for the last twelve years that. The club has provided services to the youth, the theme has not changed, we need additional space. Consistently, it has not changed at all. So as Prosser continues to grow, I think many of you know that the population is growing, we have almost thirteen hundred homes that are coming online in the next. Three years or so, and, um. We need, I think we're all in agreement that we need to continue to provide some space for our club kids, for our community, and. Um, I understand that. Uh, Zebby was here a couple of weeks ago, and Brian Ace, who's the CEO. Of the club was here and speaking in favor of this agreement, and so I am again here tonight just speaking in favor and asking if, um. The board would consider executing the agreement quickly. And that's really all I have to say, just wanted to thank you guys, thank you for, um, your support of our community and your commitment to the youth, and thank you for. Putting this board, or putting the, um, agreement in front of the board for consideration of approval.
Well, that's it. Rachel?
What's up?
Said, I know they're working.
I know.
They will work faster, but once you start getting lease agreements, contracts involved in. Just like a giant.
Totally aware of that, indeed.
I, I would, I would much rather do things on a handshake like two years ago, but those days.
Maybe.
Those days were over.
Well, thank you.
They're working on it.
Yes, thank you, I understand.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not signed up that wants to? Don't all run to the front? All right, so we'll move on then. Uh, stu- student representative reports. Um, you can jump in.
Um, so just a few, you know, just basic things, uh, Wish Week was this week. Um, which has been going pretty great, and probably noticed a few of the fishing related things around, uh, the team was gone wishing. Land words, um. Not a lot to talk about, there's a basketball game in. Ten minutes. Um, so there's that, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a ton to report on, um, we did have some things that we are gonna bring to your attention, attention at the next meeting, or the meeting after that. That we just wanted you to be aware of, um, we've kind of been. Talking amongst ourselves and doing a bunch of research into, um, sexual health curriculum, I know that that was on an agenda about two weeks ago, and then it got canceled off. Um, I don't know when that got moved to. Um, but we've kind of been looking into that, giving a student perspective, we've been asking students around the school. Cause that's who it directly affects, and so we have some input on that that we were hoping to share with you guys. And then I think.
Um, a lot of it is like, we're kind of preparing it, so we have a lot to give you at once, but. For this meeting, I was just more interested in adding to conversations that are gonna come up, I think. Um, there's a lot of good stuff on here that I am pretty interested in. Could we, cause we all, we always kind of. So he kind of says everything. Yeah. We had a good winner ball, yeah, it was. Good. Yeah, I don't have, I don't really have anything else, they spoke for me, so.
They already said what you were gonna say, darn it, next time, go first.
We'll have, we'll have more next.
Uh, one more thing, um, history night for NHG, um, is at the middle school on the fifteenth, from five thirty to seven. Um, I'll be there judging, so if anyone wants to come criticize me, you can. Um, but yeah, that's about all we have, we did have questions about things that will come up.
All right, guys, thank you. Which takes us to consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the consent item as presented.
I saw that, I had questions on classified personnel, I would like to remove that from the consent items.
I didn't hear what you said.
I would like to move item B, the classified personnel from the consent items and put it on as an action item, thank you.
So we want. No, I don't know, I'm just, which one was it, Airbnb? I know you said it.
It's B, classified person.
Two. Would now be. Bye. All right, so. Let's start that over. Entertain a motion to approve the consent items would be removed. And move to the end of the action items.
I'll make that motion again, Andy.
All right, now I don't have to rewrite it, that's what I was hoping for, we have a second?
I'll second that, with moving, uh, classified personnel to the end of, uh, action items.
Okay, first second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Right. So then we jump to discussion items. First one on it was mental health. Is that yours, Deanna?
I, yeah, I didn't ask to have it on there, but I can give you guys the update with, um, some of the things that were going on, so we did post for a licensed clinical social worker. Unfortunately, we didn't get anybody that was fully qualified, so we're reposting, we have reposted that position. The salary falls within the teacher's salary, but, um, so we posted it, we posted beginning and salary is how we normally post a job posting. But technically, a licensed clinical, clinical social worker has to be in the master's category, so we reposted it so they could see that it wasn't gonna be that. Very beginning salary, because they would have to have a master, so it would have to be at the beginning, master salary at the very minimum. So we'll see if we get any, um, new, um, applicants that are qualified. Um, I have heard there were some people talking about it, you know. Some of our counselors and, you know, touch with social workers, so we'll see. Um, our care solace is being used by staff and students and families. Um, we've done not only some warm handoffs with staff, um, you know, like counselors helping a student, but we've had, actually the most has been anonymous searches and anonymous. Requests for help, um, we can see the numbers on that, but we can't, you know, can't obviously say any other information. Um, and one of our, uh, students that has done the warm handoff has an appointment coming up, so, um, and that's just been within. I think last week was the first time I saw students on there, so, um, I'm pleased for that, even, you know, it's, it's. Um, not hundreds of people yet, but there's people getting help that. Um, you want me to talk about the dog now, I had that on my report, but I can talk about the dog, uh, so we've had a request. By a parent to have therapy dogs at school. So, um, I did some research, I've also spoken to Clear Risk. Um, Clear Risk says no. Um, but they usually say no to most things, they, they don't recommend having dogs, but they also are aware and know that there are many districts that have them. And it's successful, um, I did ask, um, Lay Marson, when I was speaking to him about. Well, how many claims have you had for, you know, therapy dogs or some sort of issue at school? And then he proceeded to tell me about a really bad situation, well, that was to actually a dog in a. It was not a therapy dog, it was a, like, they also cover like, um, rescues and stuff like that, and it was some rescue dog that they didn't disclose was violent, like, was aggressive. And so didn't have anything to do with schools, or didn't have anything to do with therapy dogs, so I said again, so like, what's your data, like, what kind of issues have you had? So, um, there, like I said, there are schools around that have them, um, there are, they, they actually kind of recommend not having policy, but having more of a. Uh, proceed, like, kind of like guidelines for a therapy dog at school, and, um, as long as it doesn't conflict with, uh, another policy we have about animals at school, because we do have one. Um, it's something districts can do, and I have some examples of, um, guidelines that Grandview. Uh, a few other districts, I can't remember all of them, that use, that have therapy dogs, so my question with Clear Risk saying, no, don't get a therapy dog, but yes, we know people get therapy dogs. Um, is, would you like me to proceed with that or not?
So the student or teacher?
The, so usually what happens if a district has their own therapy dog, is that somebody has to take care of the dog. So somebody would actually take possession of the dog, have the dog at their home, bring the dog to school. They would be in charge of like the dog's, you know, regular care, but the district would probably be responsible for expenses of it's the district's dog. Um, the dog that this parent came to me out as a dog they have, and they were wanting to offer to have the dog come, so, um, you know, there definitely needs would be need to be rules and guidelines, but it would require someone in. The district at, say it was at, it, the challenge is that, say it's, we get, we'll start with one dog and it's an elementary dog. Well, you can't really have a teacher, so you have to have somebody that would actually be able to take the dog to various. Buildings, so there'll be some challenges, but districts overcome that, some districts have dogs in like, almost all their schools. So, it's something that, you know, would take some time to work through, um, it could be done, but there would be some challenges, and again, Clear Risk says no, but.
Well, they say no to roller skating and swing sets too, so.
They, they do, and we don't try not to go roller skating, and I guess we're getting rid of swing sets, but anyway, um. We used to go skiing when they told us not to go skiing, so.
That's a question.
Yeah, that's.
Is it discouraged or prohibited?
It's not prohibited.
And so discouraged is they'll still ensure it prohibited is they won't ensure it in the school.
Yeah.
You know, takes all responsibility for it, so.
So Grandview and Sunnyside both have service dogs, we reached out to them and see how they handle it, and I know that the handler for the Grandview dog is from Prosser.
Yeah.
They actually have teachers at Grandview that have service animals, but I'm part of the.
And now, if someone has a service animal, obviously they can bring that animal to school, this would be specifically a therapy dog. That would spend time with kids, you see, you know, things like kids reading to the dog and all sorts of things, I did reach out to Grandview, Grandview, and, and. I, Sunny Center Seela provided me information as well, um, and again, they don't have a policy, they have guidelines for the dog and the information they've got to families. I'm happy to pursue it, um. But I just, if, or not, whatever the board would like me to do.
Certainly look into it.
I'd like to learn more about it.
Yeah.
I think you run into a big old. Big wallet, you had some kids that were allergic and.
Well, you get hypoallergenic dogs.
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't, I guess, preclude that they, maybe, I mean, but you do, most of them are like Golden Doodle, like they're hypoallergenic dogs, which is then usually more care. So there's expense, the district has expenses and stuff that would be incurred with that, and the dog costs money, usually unless you get a grant.
It is another scaffold in our mental health kind of, um, actions, especially for younger students. Um, who care solace may not be a real viable option for them, they may be too young, so.
I know, uh, uh, I don't know if Terry Tucker still does it, but Terry Tucker used to bring her, um, little French Bulldog, and she's special ed teacher at Patterson. And she used to bring her little Frenchie in, and, um, that worked really well for, um. When she was working with children on reading and that, it was a real calming effect, um. But I, I don't believe that they had any specific training.
Yeah.
It was just, it was, uh. Um, she, she'd bring them in all the time and was real calming for those kids to be able to sit on the floor with the dog and read to the dogs and, and.
And we currently don't allow staff members to bring in a dog just under that kind of circumstance, just because of the risk. Um, we, you know, if they have a therapy animal or something, that would be different, uh, or excuse me, a, a service dog, um, or service animal, um. So, I mean, it's, I think it sounds cool, but.
Yeah.
So is the question that you're asking, is it to pursue a district-owned dog or to pursue a.
I, I.
Therapy dog for particular student?
I don't, I don't, no, no, it would be a dog for our students, it wouldn't be for one student, it would be a, a therapy dog that, uh, that perhaps all of our students would have access to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or that a, a teacher that worked with a specific group of, of students. What, uh, would have, would be able to bring in that would work.
And it might be like, like, you might have a middle school teacher that is housing the dog and you keep, the, the dog becomes their pet.
Right.
Their, therapy dogs are very highly trained, that's why they're expensive, um, so they're trained, and so the dog would be. Not just have to be with that teacher, I mean, he'd be able to go into different rooms and see different students or different groups of students, and. They do have a great effect on kids, I mean, I, like I said, that's why I kept asking him, so what had, mad it's happened with therapy dogs in school? So not to preclude, I mean, but the, uh, he goes, yes, our first answer is always no, but, so it wasn't a hard no, it was a no, but, so.
If the board's open to it, maybe, now, like, if somebody had one that they could bring in a couple hours, like, allow, you know, if the decision is that we can move forward. Then find somebody who's maybe willing to bring the dog in and kind of test the.
I already have somebody.
See, so if we do something like that, test the outcome, is it effective? Do the kids like it, do we have a lot of complaints, rather than getting a dog, because just like, humans, dogs have a long lifespan, not as long as humans, I know that, but. That's a huge, it's a financial commitment, a long, we can't just say, yeah, we'll pay for a year, and then you're on your own. And there are a lot of police agencies that have service dogs that are actually have therapy dogs, and there's universities, there's. Um, hospitals, yeah, hospitals is another one, so I think there's a lot of places that we can maybe partner with and say, hey, can we borrow your dog, you know, can you, can you bring them in and maybe we have a financial, um. Benefit to them, and we pay for those one day here and there, but I think it'd be a better financial decision, not a dog full-time right away.
So we have someone that's willing to bring their dog in, I don't imagine that they would want financial. Um, compensation for that, they, they've offered, um, it would, it'd be, it's a great resource for like a calming room for kids who are struggling with behavior.
Yeah.
Maybe we can bring it to a work session in the future.
Well, it's worth looking into. So what was next?
Does it help board members, we call them for bringing a therapy dog?
Yeah.
I got more dogs than I would to do.
Maybe.
Thanks, Steve.
Either way, you agree. Okay, next discussion item is construction update. So I don't know if that log spin is, yeah.
Okay.
He is, he runs late sometimes.
She have Dax. Dax Logston, that's his name. You can, I mean. Don't see him. I talked to Dick. Period. Especially Dan's big and sick, but. He's a Dax.
Is he unmuted?
Ask him to unmute.
Good evening, Dax, can you hear us? Probably just picked that time to jump up, we'll get him. Top of coffee.
Can you unmute him?
I'm here. All right, well.
Could we schedule that for a work session and then ask for him to be in person for Dan? But I think, I think I, I have a lot more questions than I would can cover briefly in the meeting with where we're at so far.
It might be better.
On our project.
Yeah, ask him to unmute, but.
Maybe send him a message for later.
Well, if he gets back to us, we'll chat with him, uh, next on the list is the Boys and Girls Club release, an update. Yeah, so Deanna and I had the opportunity to meet with Brian Ace, uh, the ball is in his court. Um, I don't know if he's online tonight, he said he would be, but he's, uh, we thought that we would have the draft ready to bring to the board tonight. He said he wanted to do some more work on it, he, so he said, tell everybody that I'm working on it, I'm the, I'm meeting up here, so, um, yeah.
See Brian Ace on there?
He is.
Yeah.
There he is.
All right, everybody, hey, sorry, I couldn't join you in person tonight, but yes, just as a follow-up to that. Um, we had a great meeting yesterday, I'm feeling very encouraged based on our last board meeting, the conversations we had with administration. Um, yesterday, and, and, uh, I will be doing some work on my end and then bring you back, uh, that revised piece for discussion and decision, so. Um, great progress over the last couple of weeks, appreciate everybody investing in this, and, and we're gonna get there, and we're gonna get there soon.
Right up. All right, thank you very much, sorry it's taken so long.
No, I, hey, I appreciate this, we understand process, and I think we're in a good place now with good open communication, and we're gonna have a great outcome for the kids of Prosser.
All right, sounds like a plan.
So we've sent them a lease to review.
Yeah, we, we tentatively agreed on a lot of the language, and so Brian's gonna fine tune it and finesse it, and, um. We will bring it, once we get to that place where, um, the draft is done. Or, it should be next week or so, I'm hoping. All right, we all good with that?
That sounds good.
All right, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you, have a great night, appreciate the time.
You as well. All right, so that leads us to action items, right off the bat, we have the, uh, it's a fellowship of Christian athletes, FCA, and they are. Oh, there we go, that was easy.
Um, hi, my name's Juliana Phillips, I'm a senior here, and I am presenting Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a new club for approval. Um, Fellowship of Christian Athletes is a national organization, um, found in a lot of post-secondary and, um, public schools and, um, including. For example, Othello and Kenan McHigh School, um, and the mission of FCA is to present coaches and athletes. Um, in all who they influence, the challenge and adventure of, um, learning about God and then pursuing him more and. Joining in faith in Christianity and fellowship, and, um, we have had a group that's been meeting off campus at Share House, which is a cafe in town, um. Which started fourteen months ago, and we have a small group, and we meet every Sunday night and discuss fellowship, um, we start by opening with. A verse, um, we have, we use workout terminology, which is ready, set, go, we start with a ready, which is a small message, the set, which has, um. Some more verses, and then we go into some questions and dialogue and just discuss how our faith can connect to our schoolwork, to our, um, athletics, to our lives, and. Just share information to each other to help, help grow as Christians, um. If we move this into the school, which we hope to get approved, um, the activities. Um, would include, like I said, huddles, um, at lunchtime, where students would have the opportunity to read Bible passages, participate in devotionals, listen to guest speakers, and play games, and just. Enjoy the community, um, we planned, uh, also host quarterly outreach programs and service projects to serve the school district and Prosser community. These are not like fundraisers, but they're just big events to include everyone overall, you don't even have to be a part of FCA, you could just. Come to these events, and, um, we would be putting them on, and this club we hope would meet, um, weekly at lunch, and. We would have these activities, and we would definitely share fellowship, and we have, um, it's completely student-led by Salt Leaders, and Salt, um, is Student-Athlete Leadership Team. Um, and these leaders, I am currently a Salt Leader, these leaders meet monthly, uh, with our advisors, one of our advisors, two of our advisors are here, Ms. Lopez and, uh, Mr. Weinman, and. They would, we would meet with them, and, and at those meetings, which are monthly, they advise us, whereas us Salt Leaders, every single week, will advise other students. And will lead them, and, um, it's open to all students, regardless of it being called Fellowship of Christian Athletes, it's non-denominational, it's for anyone that can come. Um, you don't have to be an athlete, but, and if everyone, everyone is welcome for that, there's no membership dues, there's no funds needed, um. And, yeah, any funds we would need would be just to sponsorship partners, but, yeah, it would be. Really great to move into the high school, and I think it's definitely in need, and I know a lot of students that. Have questions about faith and just need people to pour into their lives, and if that be students, then that would be great, and I think it would be an awesome opportunity for. Kids, even if they're not interested in the faith, maybe they come to just meet new students and. Just have a better community that they can come to if they're struggling or if they're not struggling, and, um, yeah. That's kind of all I have.
Sounds like a really good club, is there any questions? All right, well.
Um, actually. We had a few, more of just a clarification, um, we think it's a great idea, um, but there was just some. Wordage in here that got us a little bit confused about a few things, um, so. One of them was that it's open to everyone, which is great, I love the inclusivity, um. But then later on, it says that purchase a, a class set of Bibles, which that's not a problem, but if you're open to all religions. I feel like there is a need for a variety of religious texts in here, um, whether that's the Quran, um, for Muslims, or it's the Torah for. Uh, those who are practicing the Jewish faith, um, I feel like. It'd be something that'd be good to have in there, because if you're there to spread the word of God, um, there's people that might have a different perspective on that, it might be something nice to include.
I'm gonna direct that question over to Miss.
So Fellowship of Christian Athletes is Christian-based, so it doesn't mean that kids have to be Christian to join, but we do teach out of FCA curriculum, which is Christian. But we do teach out of FCA curriculum, which is Christian based. Um, so that would be biblical. And it would be specifically New and Old Testament. Um, this is a student interest group, so just like Dex and Dice is a student interest group. We would be welcoming to everybody, but if there was a group that wanted to start something that was a different religion, that would be absolutely. Welcome on our campus, just like this one is. It's just that this one is specifically Christian.
Anything else?
You did a great job, Julian. Thank you. I move to approve uh. The PHS Fellowship of Christian Athletes Club.
All in favor, please say aye. There you go.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our list are vouchers and payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented.
We have a second. All right, questions or concerns? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the.
I have, I have a couple. I was gonna wait my turn. Okay.
All right, so.
On the first page, nine zero six eight six two to Fort Scott Community College. And I know that's a reoccurring payment. But can you remind me what it's for?
That's where we get our materials for the uh, credit retrieval for.
Is that a quarterly expense?
Um, it's actually, it's an as needed per student expense. So it's, we order per trimester, but. Depending on the student, when they're coming in for credit retrieval and what class their counselors are signing them up for. Um, whether it's a BLA class, uh, US history class or a science makeup class, all those things. We understand what those are first and then we bring those in.
Thank you. Then further down the page was JR's Heating and Cooling, nine zero six eight six eight. And I was just curious as to what heating issue we were addressing. Heights, KRV, old PHS. The district office is cold too?
It would hurt a day, a day.
Okay, well, one day.
They almost died.
Maybe two days, but.
But you know what? You did answer my question because I was wondering what, what building it was for. Then my last question is what are pan liners? Because I think we have that expense. At least five times. I think to Amazon, ten cases of pan liners, three hundred and forty-two dollars, ten cases of pan liners. Negative fifty-six, sixty dollars, ten cases of pan liners, a hundred and eighty-three dollars. This general fund, basic education, let me match, match that. It was to Amazon, so that would make sense if it's for the cat fur. Ninety-eight, six eight, green line. And I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. My other comment was perhaps we should invest in a toner company because we're buying it like.
It was negotiated in the teacher's contract. So with that also comes toner for every single printer for all of those. So we are spending a lot more. We are, and I have been working with. Specifically the people who supply our copiers to do an analysis of prints. So that we can possibly bring back and say, well, if we have, you know, maybe a few of them more centrally and. Still high functioning, something where maybe two or three teachers have went, no, I know, we'd have to negotiate. And that, but if we are able to justify that, so say this printer is only printing two or three, but this printer is, you know, two hundred copies or something. Um, so we are trying to look at that. Um, also, if we let them take over the management, they would cover all the toners. And you know, they would do all the tracking, fixing, repairs and stuff. So. We save on the toner cost, but then of course there's a cost with hiring them to do that. And it's usually a wash, but that would take the um, workload off of our technology department. So there is some benefit there. And so that's something I'm looking at over the next six months. And they've already started doing the, the data analytics on that.
Could be, I think, two other service providers for the big, the bigger copiers, right? Minolta and Canon. Is it just specific automation? Well, that would be nice to alleviate the IT stock.
So Sean and crew are doing all the toners and inks and everything.
So some of the building secretaries are ordering the toner, but if there's any issues that they're broken, um, and there is some central ordering.
I'm referring more to the installing and film. Or the teachers doing that.
So the printers are not actually on our network. They were put in the MOUs, so each teacher had a printer with the understanding that they would just be hardwired to the teacher laptop. Um, so the install piece to them is fairly straightforward. You just put them on the desk and plug them into the laptop. And then each printer comes with its first cartridge, but after that, it was up to the building to provide cartridges as needed. And the teachers are putting them in themselves. We didn't have the staff to take care of it, so that's the way it was.
Anymore?
That's the end of my question. Thank you.
Anybody else have any concerns?
No.
All right, guys, so. We have our first and second, all in favor of approving the vouchers and payroll, please say aye. All right, so Buck and Elizabeth songwriting and performance. Cowboy Buck.
I'll make a motion.
Any uh, questions or concerns?
I have a. Concern, not me, uh, not a question. You know, under this, we're approving and signing the consultant agreement with, with this, these individuals, but we do not have the consultant agreement. In the packet. This is, and there's another one, and we get to that next, but. If we're gonna approve something, it has to be in this packet. I don't think all the, you know, the I-nines or whatever else is part of it, but we do have a district sheet that. For consultants that I think needs to be part of this, so we can approve the contract. Yes.
And so I've actually advised them, um, when some of these are coming forward, that we do the cover sheet because if they're not a business and have a registered. Like technical number, they use their social. So by putting their social on it, now granted, we can redact it too. And that's their personal secret sometimes, depending on who it is and their social. And so. Um, and the signature line is actually, so I would have the authority to sign it or Mr. Allen. And so they're coming to the board for approval to enter into that agreement, but the actual form is signed by the board, so that was. A decision I had made. If you don't want it that way, if you would like the full agreement, thank them.
I would.
I didn't feel comfortable with that. And now I think it was three agreements ago that I was like, oh, we can't do that. Um, so that's kind of why I changed.
And, and that makes sense. And I wouldn't, I, I would, I would prefer to see it just because it gives us more information. Either cover sheet's great and it's a. You know, having the cover sheets now is, is a blessing. But I would like to have everything included if possible.
Probably just anything personal redacted and whatever we can see, we see. Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I had a quick comment. I've been knowing with this, so when I saw it, I got a big smile on my face. It is great. But I do agree with you. It'd be nice to have all the paperwork, you know.
I can, I can attest to how great it is. It's been. We close to ten years or so since I've done this and I still.
I've heard of it.
Yeah. I know it's really popular. My comment is we just approved a new elementary music curriculum. That was expensive and my understanding was that the new music curriculum would be what the programs were derived from. So it seems like we're double dipping with this expense. Um, there was a Christmas program or holiday program for I think just second graders. Just at KRV. Um, so no program with the new. Music curriculum, arts curriculum for first and second graders or Christian students based on what we've already purchased.
So we've talked about that. Um, because I actually met with the, the arts teachers, it's been probably about a month ago. Um, and they want to build back to where every grade has a program. It might not all be Christmas. There's some do a spring. I know that they do, Sue will do like a, a winter and a spring, but in some respects, these are like our first ones we've had since pre-COVID. So they would like to get to where they're doing something for each grade, but that's something they're working towards.
That's good to hear, yeah. But I would like to see it come back with the contract.
When is the uh?
It says here March first.
Yeah. So we still have time to make sure it happens, right? Yeah. Yeah, either way, even if it's a twenty-second, we still have time, so. Yeah, we could do the next meeting as a special meeting. So you guys want it brought back?
And Kevin Gilman texted me, he wanted you to know that they had a Christmas program at multiple grade levels.
Well, we know somebody listens to us. All right, so.
Must be home listening.
So we want this brought back. Uh, instead of our work session, we'll do a special so that we can approve this. And then you want the cover sheet with anything personal redacted or, or not the cover sheet, um.
The consultant agreement, yeah.
Okay. So we will table this. So I mean, I just looked at it and I don't remember what the date was. No, the one before that, if we do the next Wednesday. Just to make sure that nothing gets. Okay, so this will be table till the fifteenth. We don't need to vote on tabling anything, correct? So that moves us down to D, which is MEP Program Consultant Service Agreements. We have a motion to approve. I do have.
Provide any information or?
We don't have a service agreement for this one.
Do we have time? I don't remember. When is, when is the uh?
The services are supposed to be for the thirteenth and the fourteenth of this month.
We'll need the contract.
What was that?
Please come back with a contract. Are we in agreement then? It needs to come back with a contract?
Well.
Unfortunately, it starts Monday and Tuesday.
It's professional development for teachers.
Next week.
Oh, I thought you said next month.
It's next week, right?
Yeah, next week.
So yeah, there is no chance of bringing it back, so.
I'd be, I would be willing to let it slide this time.
That was my fault. That was not.
So I was just informed. I don't know what I'm talking about. We do need to vote to table. To table the, the Cowboy Buck writing and performance.
I moved to table the.
Jason.
Who's getting information from the outside? No, like, is it like Robert's Field of Order, like tech, text you, you do it wrong? All right, I second the table.
Listen, we had a motion and a second on Cowboy Buck. We'd probably have to pull that off, right?
Okay, so they were withdrawing.
So Jeannie needs to withdraw her motion and I'll. And I will second, I will withdraw my second.
Okay, so then Jason has the first to table. Do we have a second to table? All in favor of tabling until the fifteenth? All right. Now, so that crisis was averted. So now we'll go back to D, which is the Program Consultant. I am apparently in a lot of trouble now.
Well, I'm here to just answer questions, but essentially um, are aware that we have a planetarium. We have expanded our after-school program. Uh, just at school, we're now starting the elementary. And as such, now we're gonna start incorporating the use of the planetarium. After-school program more often. However, we now have, we have two teachers at the. Middle school and two teachers at the elementary level. And then one alternative teacher who kind of helps and supports uh, when she can. So. The more teachers we have to get trained to use the planetarium, the more often MEP program can use that. And then. Once the two programs train, our goal is to then filter that through to the older students to be able to do the shows. The, the actual planetarium shows. Focusing on the academic language components of science for speaking and also writing.
Hate to ask this, but what does MEP stand for again?
It's the migrant education program.
Thank you.
And so it just.
Yeah, that's what it was. I just didn't know it's the last two letters.
How often have you used the pop-up planetarium?
Uh, we've used it actually quite, um, so we've used it at the middle school with the sixth grade science uh, class. They were. Doing some work with the moon phases and guard and also the tilt for the earth. We've had some out, uh, over the summer, we used it quite a bit. Um, that was pretty fun. And then we've also used it for our literacy night. Fortunately, we had some conflicts with other things going on, some different games. So we're gonna do that again. I've been working with. All of our other team members and other organizations to help out. And so we can reschedule that for the spring hopefully and have a better turnout. Not have so many conflicts. In the winter, it's a little bit tough because you have multiple winter sports happening and so that kind of. Those parents everywhere. But that's our goal is to increase that more. And then once the students. Are trained more along the lines of high school students, they'll be able to actually come into the elementary classrooms. And provide whatever services the teacher may need in their science curriculum and or. Additional learning experiences for them. But the goal is for students to increase their language, the speaking. Academic language and the writing of academic language because they have to write scripts and programs within the system.
And getting your parents involved in this too, I would imagine.
It'll also be showcased um, at our February twenty-fourth uh, pack meeting. Which will be happening, it's a resource fair, so it'll also be showcased there as well. So everybody's welcome to come on down.
So Friday night?
Check it out, yeah.
All right, guys, so here's where we're at. He's gotta have it for next week. We gonna move forward with it or?
I move to approve the professional development for the MEP after-school program.
All in favor of approving the MEP? Uh, service agreement, please say aye.
Thank you very much. And in the future, I will be sure to ensure that all of our paperwork is properly submitted. Thank you so much.
I think it'll be even more important to make sure it's in a week, week or two ahead of time.
Thirty days ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, because realistically, if this wasn't such a trustworthy cause, it could.
Yeah, I will, the, the person who's by the professional development is really doing the district assault, so. Um, that was a lot of, kind of, a lot of capital that I had. Um, that was a lot of, kind of, a lot of capital that I had to spend to get that to happen, so. Thank you so much because it really kind of does expedite things for kids.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Eric, we did a reminder, uh, um. And we'll have the pack meeting.
Yeah, but you'll have an invitation to your calendars.
Great. Last time. Perfect, thank you.
Not for your fun.
I was gonna say, that's news to me. I've never seen a calendar.
You get a piece of paper.
Post-it note. Alright, so. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's contract. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion, we have extended the superintendent's contract for one year.
I'll second that.
Any comments?
I do have a comment. Uh, the contract that's in the packet. Um, has an expiration date of twenty twenty-four. Should this not have been amended for the packet to say that it expires in twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, there should have been an end and attached to it. For some reason. That slipped my mind. We will include an end and it is reflected in the board minutes which were approved.
Okay, so I'll make sure that gets updated appropriately. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Nay.
All of most, I oppose. Okay, next Columbia Virtual Academy.
I have a follow-up question, so. Last year it was approved to go through twenty twenty-five, so now the superintendent's contract will go through twenty twenty-six. Is that correct?
Should be, yes.
It's three years.
Should be three years from. Three years from tonight, correct?
Twenty-three, twenty-four?
It would be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have to have it by the end of May, right?
June.
So. Okay, I was thinking it was the end of May and then it rolled into new. You're right, thirtieth day is, okay, my bad.
I, I do, uh, now that I have a. Thanks for holding it up to the next, um, but I do have another comment. I think. I think it'd be good for us as a board to do an additional evaluation. Um, instead of doing the, the single evaluation in January, that we should do. An additional evaluation, you know, six months later, whether it's June or July. That way, you know, when we give, um, when we give the, uh. Goals, you know, at the beginning of September, we basically evaluated those goals. Um, January. And it would be nice to do a follow-up at the end of the school year. You know, prior to going into, uh, September, creating the additional goals for next school year.
In fact, a lot of the WASD stuff suggests that you do like a soft evaluation mid-year.
Yeah.
Um, every, you know, every board, every district does it differently, but there's no reason that can't happen.
I think it'd be, it'd be prudent for all of us to, as we review all those goals from this school year again. And then move on to what the goals will be for next year.
And do that in June.
And yeah, like sometime in June after school's out or something. Or.
So July? School year's over mid-June, isn't it?
Yeah, it'd be somewhere around that ballpark, June, July, and then revisit it again in January.
Sounds like a plan. Alright, so next on the list is F, Columbia Virtual Academy, assessment agreement.
We talked about this last time. Um, we have students that are, um, attending. Places like, o- online like Columbia Virtual Academy and if they live in our district, we're required to provide their assessment here, so.
I moved to approve the agreement with Columbia Virtual Academy.
I'll second.
Alright, any, uh, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, next is the GISA affinity card program. I believe that is you, Ms. Two.
So, um, this was presented back in October. Um, there was. You know, very minor changes, so rather than having a, and both of the gems, we would have picked one. Um, and then they added the minimum donation, then. We, that was undefined at, at the first time we had it. And then, um. We're excited if we can get this, if we can get this moving, we should still be able to get the first, um, initial minimum donation in August. If it is delayed, we might miss out on that, which is not a big deal, you know. But that's pretty much, we wouldn't earn it the first year, because it's going to take so long to actually get up and running, but there's still lanes to do that, to continue the partnership. And so, or really, etc.
I just want my little Mustang card.
Yeah, well, as soon as we get going, we'll, we'll work with the bank and get everything set up and then. We are excited.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the sponsorship agreement.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the heat affinity card program agreement as presented. Thank you.
I'll second. I'll let you second.
Okay, I'll second.
I already had half the name down.
Sorry.
First time ever that I've kept up with you guys. Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, next, food service grant award. I'll let you as well.
And so this one I had presented, um, at the last meeting, and this is just the official action to accept the five thousand dollars from, for Waste Not Washington from the Department of.
I have some questions, um. So part of this grant is to bring in. Uh, like a food sharing baskets, tables and or chillers to. Now, that's designed to take whatever's left over at each school that goes into there. And how, how's that, how does that work?
So the good thing is we've already implemented that piece.
Okay.
And whether we got the money to support it or not, it was something we already wanted to do, so we did get the approval from the Department of Health to implement the food sharing tables. So what that is, if a student gets, um, lunch and they don't, say they don't want their juice or they don't want their milk or something extra. They can put it in the bins and then the rest of the kids, if they want an extra, they can go and help themselves to it. So then there's no ceiling, um, if they're still hungry or thirsty, then they can have, um, anything from the food sharing bin. So from a food service perspective, we're limited, we can't just give out more. We have to either charge for it, um, you know, or like limit what we give out. But the food sharing allows them to give and take at their.
So kind of the follow-up on that, um. If food services isn't allowed to just give more without charging, I, I get that part. But some of the stuff has a, a shelf life, right?
Correct, so afterwards, it's open during the food service times and if it's perishable, then it's taken back. And right now, we're actually repurposing that, so not during that time, we are able to clean it up. And as long as it's, you know, it's still sealed, and then we can give it back out.
So what do we do with the food that expires and isn't, or is getting clo- it, or has a shelf life? That doesn't get served, so it doesn't make it to these baskets or? What do we do with that?
This is all in the mo- so at lunchtime.
Yep.
It goes in the basket and then after lunch, when all the kid has eaten, it's pulled back in. So it's not out for more than thirty minutes.
And the food and our food turnover is so fast because they can't hold big stores of food. There might be something they can hold longer, like they might have snacks to use for after-school or something. But the food turnover is so fast, they get food deliveries constantly and foods in and out, in and out. Same thing with milk in and out.
When it's good?
Huh?
When it's good?
Sometimes when it's not, it's out too. Different way.
If not, it would be disposed of just like.
Okay. Would that go into the composting, it would, and then it goes to the composting section, right?
We haven't implemented that yet, but with this grant, we will be able to, so we will get some composting bins and then, you know, some of the trash. So this already has reduced a huge amount of just waste. All that stuff which is being thrown in the garbage, like, no, I don't want that, I don't want that. And so it was increased in our trash, so we've already reduced that. But then once we do composting, we can actually do some of that food items too separately in compost, so. Uh, we are excited and we plan to, um, so if approved. And our food service director during tomorrow will actually work with, um, the C P director to, in the, um, the ad classes. In the horticulture classes to see how we can collaborate on freezing the compost and maybe growing some of our own food, you know.
Know them show hogs you hear about?
Um.
It's, it's just a start, just, you know, a first step to hopefully with that.
So my, and thanks for clar- you know, getting more information on the food sharing and stuff, um. I lost it, my channel, I'm sorry. Um. I'm not gonna, I will.
How big are the compost bins? I mean, are, are these like enormous or?
We haven't purchased them yet, but they would probably be like the size of a normal, um, trash can, trash can.
Um, it looks like we get a smoothie kit. Along with this.
Um, so I put that to the bottom, that's not something that would normally come to the board because it's not over the threshold. But since we got it, I just wanted to, um, kind of give recognition to the Washington Dairy Council that they're donating. Um, to smoothie kits, the blenders to make smoothies. So, um, not a huge expense, but just something that, you know, just to give them recognition that they're.
No, I think it's, I think it's great. So my question on the smoothie kits is. Is it just the blenders and then we prepare the smoothies ourselves? Okay.
Yes, it's just the.
So would the smoothies be made where? That'd be here at the high school? And then? Sent to the schools at that point in, in, in our own packaging? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, and we do every day. So our central kitchen is here, so a lot of the food is prepared here and then delivered.
Okay.
Every day to the other locations. We are trying to get the other locations obviously to be more self-sufficient. Um, with their own oven and their blenders and everything, but this is still the, the main hub for some of those.
Okay.
A lot of the scratch cooking is, well, all the scratch cooking is done here. And we are trying to.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Alright, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service grant. Awards.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, yeah, I was gonna say that runs. Classified personnel from the front got moved to, it's now item I.
So I had a question with two of the positions with Ms. Good, Goodbo. What is the position? Notify the district of her intention to retire at the end of the year, but what position is she retiring from?
Thank you, Scam.
And then will we replace that position or will it be absorbed?
I would imagine they'll probably have to replace it, but I'm sure we'll have to look at staffing in that time coming.
And then the new administrative assistant to the superintendent, is that a new position or is someone being replaced?
Tammy, we can fill the business office position, so.
They're all my questions.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I do, um. Uh, we have a position for an armed security officer on here, which I think is a great thing, but I would hope that. I think these posi- these positions specifically, they're not, there's not a lot of them. I would like to have board involvement when it comes to interview. Um, and I don't know, I didn't get.
I didn't either.
So.
Yeah.
I never.
And I've had a conversation around that with, uh, the principal. Um, if the board wants. Uh, you can follow up, you can pull that for approval. And we can schedule another round of interviews. I know that especially when we start talking about armed security officers, that that's a big, big position. Responsibility is huge. And so if the board wants to follow up with another interview, um, two or more. We can call a special board meeting or we can have another set before approval. Um, and the board can kind of reserve the right to interview the last two finalists. And we can set up a, kind of an ad hoc committee, um, for the board, so. Um, it's, it's all on what the, the board wants to do. I know that these are very, very visible positions. And, um, there's been a big commitment from the district to do that, so.
We had a pretty thorough, I mean, I would consider it a very thorough energy team. There was twelve of us on that team, three being parents. And one of those parents is a police officer in the neighboring district. So it was a very, it was a very thorough team also. Um, so I may, it's just not, I don't know if that's the, um. You know. It, it never came to my attention that we needed to have a board member, but, um, we had a lot of input on that and.
I, I think just in general on those types of positions, we'd like to be able to have a little input. On, uh. I, I guess my personal opinion is on, on. Like directors or security guards, those real visible positions. I, I think the board, it's important for the board to have that opportunity to have some input on that hiring process. Um, like administrators or directors or high security or high visibility positions. I think it's important for us to at least have that option to, to participate in that process. That's just my personal opinion.
It's the board's desire, it is.
Do you have to, like, to post final word or?
We had one that stood out. A lot. I mean, we have, we had three. I will cancel, we can come up with two, but I, I don't know, Glenn, you can, because there was one that stood out. To all of us.
Okay.
Is the. He stood out, and he's, I mean, I think that that's, um. You know, based on, I mean, we, we're all invested in Heights.
Yeah.
And we want what's best for Heights. You know, with the parents and the, um. Other security guards that were there, the classified staff, the teachers. Secretaries, we're all there. And it was unanimous. I mean, it really, one stood out and I think, I'm, we're all super excited. Um, about what he's going to bring to the table, so if you'd like another one, we can come up with two. If that's what you guys want.
Just so the boards are aware, as, as the security director, I recuse myself of making any recommendations at all with any of the candidates. I, I was there specifically for the purpose of answering job-related questions that the other panel members may have had. Now, I worked with both the, the top candidate and the second candidate. I, I've never met the third candidate. Because he was a teacher. He didn't even qualify to be actually interviewed, in my opinion. So I recuse myself, I simply answered the question. The board unanimously, or the panel should say unanimously. Voted on which member they believe was the, the top candidate. Right, no.
Well, guys, I don't want to proceed.
If we push it, you, because currently you have no security at this point.
No, and I had to call Scott at the middle school a couple of different times.
And we have no substitute, correct?
Correct. I don't, I don't know whether substitute applications, if they have gotten interviews, I don't know.
Not that it matters, but what, uh, what department did he come from? Just curious.
Which, which, the top one?
Yeah. Okay, sure.
The second one came, he was a Benton County deputy sheriff as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm okay with going ahead with this. I just, in the future, I would just. I would think, I would like us to have a, at least, um.
Representation.
Yeah.
And, and had I known that that was the board's, um, request or even desire, I would have done that. None of the interviews that I've ever participated in, but there was no board involved, so. This is the first time I've ever heard board involved.
After what you, you said, I'm perfectly fine. Except you, yeah.
Christine Means has, uh, hands her hands up in the Zoom.
Hi, I'd love to jump in for a second. I was on this interview committee, actually, um. And I will say, uh, I really think that this candidate did stand out and I don't think. I think if we don't take action, we could miss a really valuable member of the team. And I'm going to be completely honest with the board, um, I was a little nervous when we first implemented the armed security guard thing. You know, nervous to see how it would go, right? It was a new thing. And, um, John Chumley, our former security guard at Heights, really. I mean, he was a stellar standout. He really sold me on this position and he did a fine job. I mean, he was a stellar standout. He really sold me on this position and he did a fine job. And I really believe that this candidate would um follow his lead in that way. And I think if um he's not hired, it would be a a very much a detriment to the district. And um I think there's a real importance on, if we're going to start a policy, we need to make sure that we have that policy ahead of time. Before we we get a really good one and could miss um. Mis-hiring that candidate. I think that would be a real uh, real detriment. Because I I again, I don't think that, I don't know if the board was uh involved in any of the other hirings, and so I think it makes sense to make that equitable.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna work with our HR department to make sure um that whenever we have some of these higher visibility ones, that we're also catching it from that, you know, when first interview committee. Uh recommendation comes through, you know, we can ask, did you get, you know, has the board at least been offered the opportunity to participate? And if no, say no. Um, and if we're unsure, we'll come through with that.
I move to approve the classified employees.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, that takes us to reports. Business manager, let's see.
Um, so a couple, couple things. And we currently have some outstanding meal purchases from pre-COVID. So right now, um, we've been approved for the CEP, which allows for all of our students to have um meals provided at no cost. But prior to that, the part of COVID, um, you know, we have some student accounts that still have balances, and so. And we can reach out and ask for donations. Um, we're looking at about five thousand or so. Um, it's it's six thousand, but there's some I think we can take care of. There's some employee ones that should have, you know, been allowed, and so we'll clean that up. Um, and I can get you a closer number, but we can reach out for donations, we can write them off, or we can press and try to build a, make sure that they collect. From those families, so um we talked to Mr. Ellis and he advised to bring it to the board and just be kind of what your feedback is, if we want. You know, go for donations, write them off, or collect, or a combination of any of them.
How many of them are still going to school here?
And there's a good portion who are not. And I did, I love going to go like line by line to see what is, but there's um. I think Charlie would say maybe a third of them are out of.
So. A third, so roughly four thousand dollars is about all we're gonna really recover?
Uh, so the balances are not associated, like, if the majority of the balance are out of district people, like, could be four thousand that's out of district in two thousand. It was just like number of students, so. And I will, I just didn't know what's true. Some students have a few hundred dollars on how it's done, so it really varies.
I I would like, I would not like to go out to the community and seek donations for this. I think art businesses, community members. Ask frequently to make donations for items and purposes that impact students directly in a positive way. And I think at this point, um writing the charges off would be a better use of time and money for the staff, as opposed than trying to track. Down at this point, because it's so far attached from the event.
I know for a number of years, Director Douglas took her earnings from the board and and donated them back to pay off. A lot of these debts, because it was a lot higher. But at this point, moving forward, I I said we just write it off.
Clean slate from here on?
Hmm.
What do you guys think down there?
Um, so the other thing, this is actually for the students, um, I think it was back in December, um, what if you had brought up the point of like left-handed. Um, capabilities in the auditorium? I mean, so I did refer their maintenance department and they confirmed there are a number of these that are, I'm left-handed friendly, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
I I I went and like looked at a bunch of them and I didn't see a single one, so that's why I was like.
So and I I I'm grateful that you brought it up, and so he did look and I think he said it's kind of on the outer end. But there's also this, um, you know, I'm curious, like, maybe how many students didn't have access to, and then the communication too. If we have something and and it's not being used because students don't know, um, and if the teachers don't know that that resource is there. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that there are some available, maybe it's not enough, and maybe we need to do a better job communicating where those are, but. So if you hear that it's more of a concern, or as you go in there, I need, um, you know, it's, hey, I need, I need to be over there because I would like to have, um, you know, left-handed chair. It's some, just anyway, if I can help in that process, then you have to. Um, any questions on that?
No, and um, I just, I, it's not like that big of a deal, because I mean, it's pretty just. Spun over a little bit, but for me, because I just like. It's really important. Some people don't really mind, but I remember there was like a lot of times we had to do like testing, like if we're gonna do testing in the auditorium, I kind of needed that. Um, because the computer usually is always like as, as we kind of see sometimes, probably, I always have everything right here and I work right here. And trying to do both on one side, just because like, it was just so confusing that, but thank you for letting me know, because. Now I, is it like the outside seat?
I think he said it was the outside. I did not walk through personally, um, but I can definitely get you like this.
We're gonna go like put a blanket over it, says this seat belongs to Bianca.
And so we were approved for a plant-based meal scratch, and this was through OSPI, that's why it didn't come through the board. And but we are going to implement additional menu items that are plant-based. So with the help of this grant, we are, we can bring somebody in to do like a taste test where they're kind of on the side and they have like a. It's not a chicken nugget because it's not chicken, but it's a plant-based like nuggets, so they can do something like that, or they can do a full meal takeover, where everything on the menu is plant-based. Um, I wanted to get your initial feedback on what you think would be maybe a better option.
Um, I really like that. I know a lot of, a lot of vegetarian students, vegan students, vegetarian students, so. Eating at school sometimes is like, I can't even eat most of the stuff. Um, I like that. You were saying completely plant-based?
So this would be one day, just one day they come in, they take over, so yeah, everything on the menu that day would be plant-based. And then depending on the response, that we can start purchasing those items and integrating them more often into our menu. Um. Yeah, kind of all. And this is, this would be for lunch.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. We are with this, with this.
Possible burger.
I mean, this, so this funding will also allow us to increase our normal purchase of some of the plant-based stuff, and almond, I think it's almond milk, that's like that. So that can be more readily available, so we do have some right now, but I think it's on request only. And but having that as a menu item more often, having some of the meat alternatives more often, we are gonna do that, but this specifically, they've um. They've offered to come in and either do a taste test on the side or like a full takeover for lunch. So just kind of wanna see what, what, when you think, I'm thinking the takeover would be better, but also that also forces the the students who do like the meat, they.
Yeah.
They would not have it that same day.
I see a lot of people going home sick.
The taste testing idea is kind of interesting, like, do they bring a lot of different options, so you could try different things? Versus you got one meal and it's chicken nuggets, is that the only thing you get to try when, or you know, not chicken nuggets, but veggie nuggets, whatever.
But we have chicken patties, like sandwiches all the time. A lot of kids don't eat that because it's chicken. I think that would be a really, really good one, a chicken patty or like a burger kind of thing.
So would you be more, um, do you think that having like the full takeover would be better, or just? And again, this is just one time, one day.
It's so hard, because it's like a full takeover.
I I think it would be.
But then the taste, so the taste test, it would just be a couple.
On the side, so you could get your normal meal and then, you know, those who chose to partake could partake.
I would say taste testing.
I would say takeover.
I thought it was like a, like you guys meet up one day and make food and taste it. I don't know, it's gonna be during school.
We are gonna still do that too.
Oh, okay.
The plant-based, that's specific to plant-based meals, but we are going to start implementing some just regular taste, so the smoothies. And we're gonna do the smoothie thing, and so there is a national breakfast week coming up, and so we'll do maybe a couple breakfast items. Um, and then for lunch, um, I've been working with the food instructor on them, some opportunities, she, you know, she's got some really great ideas and there's grant funding out there, so anyway.
How would you get feedback?
It was.
Talk to you.
Well, I.
That was.
So they're like, this is really good.
She asked, and we'd be there in the moment, getting feedback, if we think, you know, we could turn up, we're ready, if we can.
I would definitely eat lunch at school that day, just to get feedback, because I I love that idea.
I think it would be something that's kind of like, maybe if you could find like. Two things that are similar, one meat-based, one plant-based, and kind of have like one on a Tuesday, one on a Thursday, and kind of. Ask students how they feel about each one of them, kind of average scores, figure out, maybe they like this one more, maybe they, you know. Um, when you talk about plant-based, um, are you talking about vegetarian options, or are you talking about um, like the plant-based burgers or whatever it might be? Or is there a combination of both or?
I was telling them, I do call it barbecued pizza. But I don't know that I would do a whole day full-blown, I think you'll have a lot of food thrown in. That's just my thoughts.
Good.
Maybe happen for those that want to try options, yes. Maybe if they didn't know. Maybe if they didn't tell.
We can't do secret food to kids because they could have food allergies to something in the vegan version, so.
So yeah, and it's pretty easy to spot, like, okay, there's this stuff, there's this stuff, if you kind of just go down that line and you're like, ooh, what is this? So I think it would be really good to just keep right there.
One thing, like, so cake, beans, um salad, and you have one more. Maybe like a bean and cheese burrito or something, those don't have meat. I don't, I could be wrong about burrito, but I don't think, I think it's just meat cheese. Those things are already. They have no meat, and we haven't really had any complaints on those days, but we are trying to increase those options, so I just. Longer than.
No, there's a lot of meat um. Menu items, I think the chariot meat, chicken, stuff like that.
I look forward to bringing more stuff to you. We are gonna try to do some more taste tests, both plant-based and regular, and so we'll be, we'll be forward with that. And so thank you for your feedback to the students. Um, also to the board, um, we do have an opportunity to submit a larger grant. And I don't know that there's actually a limit, but they refer to like fifty thousand dollars, like we, you know, it, but we could send it from work. And there is an idea to put in a larger freezer at the old DHS. So if we are going to maintain it, and I know there's been a lot of different discussion about the use of that building. Um, but it would be, the the freezer here isn't quite big enough to have to fully stock everything we need for the whole district. And because we are running things back and forth to all the different um buildings, having something back at the old high school is not instructional based, so we wouldn't even get any rules with the use of it. Um, and it's a more central location, so it'd be easier. And so in working with the food service department, they think that that would be a good idea. But obviously, before we would even put in a grant to try to get money for that, kind of, it's a good, you know, initial thought, um, is it worth looking into or no, absolutely not, um.
Gonna go like an old kitchen?
Um.
Where to go?
Close to where, yeah, close to there. I mean, we're, because they also, so the other piece is the truck, so we have a really hard time getting the big trucks in and out of here. And the old high school was designed much better for the delivery, so it would go back to using that functionality.
So everything would be delivered there and then?
Correct. And then dispersed here, just, and this is just freezer space.
Just as needed.
I'm good with it if it's a grant and we don't have to pay for it.
Would the same grant provide for freezer space here?
There's not space to put it, it would kind of max out here. Well, and the, and the truck thing is actually a pretty big issue, getting the trucks in and out has been um difficult. They're making it do, but it's it's much harder here than. It's just a thought, um, it gave me a path to, but there is some money um available once a year, and it is open right now, so no guarantee we get it, but we could at least.
Is it the number one or location over any other?
For food service?
Yeah.
I mean, for for our employees, their feedback would, yes, that would be the the perfect age.
And that would be kind of the kitchen that's in that NPR.
That's where it is, yeah. There's a kitchen and like a room beside it.
Well, and we could repurpose, I mean, any of those areas around there, if we repurpose. I mean, we we can kind of do whatever we would need to do. There's construction costs, of course, but I didn't really, I haven't looked into it a lot. It's more so kind of the conceptual, if we're open to it, we can dive into seeing if it's a possibility.
I agree, if it's a grant, let's get a freezer.
Yeah, don't hurt anything to look.
Yeah. Alright, so the other thing with food service right now, they, with us being um part of the CEP, which I cannot remember the acronym, but it's where all the meals, we covered all the meals purchased. And they're, the state underestimated how much that would cost for everyone who's eligible. So um with the next couple of months, we will see reduction in our revenue for that. They do anticipate that the legislature will approve additional funding for that program, and they'll catch us that like April, May, June. Uh, but right now, they didn't let us know that that's going to be a little bit of a thing, so. From our budget, like our fund balance perspective, I'm not too worried. I think it's like thirty thousand dollars total over the next couple of months. Um, but it is just something I wanted you to be aware of. Um, also, I emailed you the budget status report today. It's just the report, so it's not intuitive. Um, I will work on getting you the full reports with all the analysis and everything by the next board meeting, and they'll be posted in a packet for everybody else to see as well. So, um, I apologize for the delay and that, but we will, we will get caught up and get get all those to you. And we are moving forward with strategic planning date, which I will not overturn um for Deanna, but I will be doing the presentation. For the board and the community at the study session on the fifteenth, unless there's something else that, you know, that needs to happen on that date.
Could I get a hard copy in advance?
Of the presentation?
Maybe?
If I haven't done it.
Okay.
I mean, I.
Well, could you bring one?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have that, and if I can, if I can get it done way prior, I will too.
Okay.
Um, for sure. And then I will have at least one more um presentation for the community. I I stand for, like, I do think transparency is important and I do want them to understand.
Good.
Um, I'm probably gonna use the fifteenth as like a test session to see what kind of questions are there, that, you know, and if I can add, answer the questions in advance. Um, of the next presentation, you know, answer them in the presentation, so anyway, that's the plan. Um, and then I just wanted clarification, there's been a lot of concern about the balance calendar. Can we just confirm that that for sure will not happen for twenty-three, twenty-four, like this next year? Like, if we're gonna do it, it would be at least a full year out, correct?
I don't think you need it done.
I, there was, I, some community concerned with it happening like right away, and so I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding correctly, like, we would need a ton of time to really. Even on a pilot program, we would need time, so it's not the board's intention to rush it.
No.
I think what would be a great idea is if something came out from the superintendent's office in social media and maybe a news article, communicating that we're doing. A study program and that it would not be implemented, you know, right away, and it would be something that we'd study over a year. I think that would be a great way to let the community know. At all, transparency as to what's going on.
And I've been visiting with the union, uh, well, one, one union, um, we've had conversations with. We haven't had conversations with all of the labor unions. Our teachers' union, who really is the entity that helps set the calendar. Kind of is interested in that idea, but that being said, there are a lot of logistics involved with that, and so. It wouldn't be something that we would jump into. Uh, there is grant money involved, um, if Deanna had. Had talked about, and the intent of that money is to really study it as a district and get parent. Parent involvement, uh, parent input, um, and community input as well. And so, uh, it's not something that we're gonna, you know, ramp through and push through and um. You know, so it is a slower process, the board will be involved in it. Um, so we're just in the very beginning phases of having that discussion. Deanna, anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I, it doesn't, there's just a lot that goes into it and not really give families heads up. It makes sense that we would follow the process and study it next year. Um, we have teachers, even some of our union folks that work with that really are anxious and would like to do it sooner, but I don't think it's prudent to to do that at this time.
I think it's important we let the community know what the steps are, and that it's not for August twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, and and then there's been all sorts of things, we're going to school year-round, like all these things, and so the misinformation definitely has been out there. Yeah.
Alright, Deanna?
So I have quite a few things too, but I'll try to go quickly. Um, we do have playground, um, designer planning meetings we're working on. Um, we have one with Verbeal next week on Monday, looking at what's possible there and finding out what the cost of that would be. Deanna, um, her boy's been helping with that. I am going to do a walkthrough of Woodstrand next Friday, the seventeenth, at one o'clock. If there's. If if there's more than three board members that want to come, I could do one at one and one at two, so we could divide up. So if you're interested in the walkthrough, let me know. Um, next Friday, next Friday at one.
Seventeen, I think.
Seventeen.
I'm absolutely in.
Okay.
Yeah, I would.
Two, we have three.
I would like to.
Three, do we have four?
Then I'm gonna do one at one and I'm gonna do.
So we're posting a meeting for the seventeen.
Genie and Jason, no, I'll just split them into two groups, so Genie and Jason, you come at two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Andy and Peggy at one?
Yep, I have you at one.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, that, that's great.
You in?
I am not available that day.
You available later?
I'm not at all on the seventeenth.
You know what, you'll let me know a different time and we'll work it out.
Thank you.
Okay, um, strategic plan dates, I'm setting them. We, we, well, it's been a challenge with high school, so with all of the things going on, and so the three, three fifteen is Amy's budget session. Where, um, I'm, I'm not sure if it's gonna be the twenty first or the twenty third, but we'll do like a data dive for probably two to three hours on a weeknight. Um, March twenty first or twenty third, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, I'll know for sure tomorrow, and then the planning session's gonna be three twenty five, it's a Saturday. Um, and we, I will be putting out, Tammy and I are working on this, but I have. Company like Jason, I need to talk to you after the meeting about a couple of the people from your list. We, um, will be putting, sending out email invitations, but I would like to also send out a hard copy, like. Reminder and invitation, so it's taken, it's a bit of a process, Tammy is still helping me with that, even though she's doing two jobs. Um, I think she, um, is gonna be working on that tomorrow. Um, so invitation will be going out, people will have more than two months, uh, well, have a month, sorry, a more than a month notice. Um, so hopefully people will be able to participate, um, I just got the final names and stuff of the teachers this, this, this week. Um, sexual health update on that, um, I have been working with, so it's primarily Linda Kerr, Kathy Esparza, and Teresa Rada are doing the work. Um, and it, it's been a challenge because they're like, we don't teach this lesson like it is, or it's not this exact way, so we're actually. Kind of doing more of a Prosser curriculum, because they use resources from multiple places, and there. There's parts of the lessons, there's no like, here's the curriculum, we do this, so, um, we plan to have, the plan is to have. The lessons ready for review, um, or done by the end of this month, they, all three of them have committed to be able to do that. And then, um, I'm gonna bring my committee back together because. They, they've made modifications, um, and adjustments the committee needs to see, and then we would do our two week review. Which the board will review at that time as well, and then if there's any issues or things that come up, then we can adjust and do all that, so it would be. If everything rolls relatively smoothly, it would be in the board, we wouldn't be to the board until like middle of April, the first meeting in April. But been a process, um, and that's all for me.
It wasn't so bad, Amy was way longer.
I know she was, I know, so I'm sure that Amy is good. Oh no.
Really?
Our annual accountability. I know.
All right, so we are.
I have a few things, uh, I just wanted to give a kind of a shout out and, um, just some. I guess a high praise to Amy Cook. Um, a few weeks ago, there was a bus from Afraid of that broke down, and Prosser kind of came to the rescue on that and, uh. Helped them get to where, you know, to where they needed to be, she also had, state patrol comes in every year. And, uh, looks at our buses and certifies some buses and vehicles, and so, um, she communicated with me that she had a clean. Um, kind of a clean audit today, and so, um, she's just doing a great job as a transportation director. Uh, community awards banquet, uh, some of you were there and able to attend, and so that was, uh, just a fun evening. Um, Eric Lares and Rick Follett, uh, have been involved with. Uh, Prosser leadership, and they were there selling keys, and so that's something we've encouraged our administrators to do and supported them. And so it's really neat for them to get out into the community and network. You know, as far as the building those bridges with the district community. Um, so kind of kudos to them for taking on a leadership role. Of course, uh, Amy had talked about, a little bit about CEP in the legislative session. I don't know if the board has been following along with, uh, Twio or this week in Olympia. Um, I know I've had, uh, at least one, well, I've spoken with Perry Dozier. And I've been in communication with, um, other legislators, um, so advocacy is important for us to engage in, so just. Is a, uh, kind of a note there, and then, um, Director Riley had suggested. That we kind of do a refresher on OPMA as well as the Public Records Act. Uh, I'll send out information on that, but just know that PD in general, uh, for the board, um, I've talked about it before. Uh, maybe a training session with, um, somebody from the ESD or WASDA, um, I think would benefit the board. And, um, kind of developing, um, kind of connections and gelling together as a team, so. I'll just say that again, and then maintenance and grounds, uh, they will be interviewing for the directorship of that. Uh, this Friday, and as I talked about before, we're hoping for and anticipating kind of a two round process. That the first round will be, uh, internal people in the district, and then the second round will include board members. Um, myself and some community members, so, um. Last piece, uh, Eric Lares talked about February twenty fourth for PAC meetings, uh, another date that we have is March ninth. At ESD one twenty three, and that's at four thirty for the Crystal Apple Awards, and so something to put on your calendar there, Deanna. Um, and I, uh, are working on setting a date for that, for the strategic planning, and so that's coming up too. So a lot of work this spring, and, um, that is all I have, uh, to report on.
All right, that leads us to board reports. Genie, got anything good?
Yeah, I hope so, um, I went to the Woodstrand Abbott Open House, it, it was really. Very well done, I got a lot of information out of it and fun, and I'm all about fun. Got to meet a lot of teachers, a lot of families, I got some of the new curriculum from all the classes. Um, Kevin had a room set up, they have a hundred book challenge. They're, they're saying that children need to read or be read to so much more than they used to think. I see Jody out there shaking her head, and we had a chili dinner, and it was nice, it was a fun evening. And then last week I was in Washington DC with our Thrive Coalition, we attended the HADCA National Forum. HADCA stands for Community Anti-Growth Coalitions of America. We took four students from the high school, Violet Boyle, Clara McKee, they're both freshmen. Uh, America Mesa and Michelle Garcia, they're both seniors. Fun, fun young ladies, we had sessions all day, we worked in tours, which included the White House. Uh, we did the Holocaust Museum, the Air and Space Museum, uh, a nighttime tour of the monuments. Yes, I came home wore out. And we had Capitol Hill Day, uh, these four young ladies, oh, Cliff Gamble is their advisor and Cliff was along, really like him. We had Capitol Hill Day, these four young ladies had prepared, uh, to talk to our congressional leaders. We had a personal meeting with Newhouse, and they handled themselves so well, I told them that. I know that everybody would be proud of them, they not only represented them well, they represented our high school well and our community well. What they chose to speak on was getting the government to give schools more money for men's health. And they, they brought this home really well, giving examples, um, we met, we now confirmed. What do they call them, congressional aides to Maria Cantwell, and I just drew a blank on our other one.
Patty Murray.
Pardon?
Patty Murray.
No, uh, well, it doesn't matter, but we did those, um, and Kathy, Patty.
With Morris Rogers.
Wasn't that silly, I should have wrote it down, but anyway, I'm gay, I'm living in the eighties. This is coming up, uh, trying to developing good choices, they used to call it kind of like, uh, family, um. Education, and now actually what they're doing. Yeah, um, family enrichment, they work with people to deal to, how to talk to your kids. You know, to get points across, it's not for children, it's just for adults that they welcome, parents. Um, foster parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles that are involved in children's lives. It's five, Tuesday nights in a row, it'll be at the middle school, they provide, um, childcare and dinner. I think Eric is gonna have the planetarium there one night, um, and from what I understand, the food's really good. And it's a great time and we need people to register, so get the word out, okay, that's it.
Peggy.
Well, um, last year, well, actually, I don't know, a couple of years, but last year. Genie and I both volunteered to work with Kyla Smith and on the, uh. The national, on the district local history night, whoosh, and, uh, we're both back this year working with them. And that'll be next Wednesday, and just a little, it's kind of exciting, it's really fun, it's really fun to participate. But, uh, just a little bit of the information on that, uh, is that for. Some of the Housel students doing the, the, that evening, this is their first view, uh, viewing and presentation of their products. She said it's an incredible proof, stretching their extended learning, this night allows them a chance to get feedback. Prior to the, uh, competition at regionals in March, as far as we know. We are the only district who does this, which may be why we do so well against our competitors. With that said, we need a few judges to help participate, so, um, it's, it's a lot of fun. Uh, and, and I'm really looking forward to participating in it again, um, but, uh. It's from, we volunteer from five to seven o'clock at Housel Middle School, and. I, I don't know if you still need additional volunteers, but if you're interested, I would. Yeah, yeah, it's really interesting, it's a lot of fun on, for our part, we give a judge students that are doing their presentations. Some of them are doing speeches, but I had the, um, I had, uh, last year I was able to watch them come in and do. Uh, little skits and, um, some read, some do poetry, but. Uh, it's just a fun evening and, um, looking forward to it. Yeah, and that, that's what they did, their skits were all about history, so.
So can we post that at the special meeting somewhere that two board members could help? It was, it is, it's Friday at seven on a workshop, so we just have to. Get back here by. Next, next one.
Yeah, and we're not.
Uh, even if we're in the same, same place, best practice, and we found that out with the dinner with Woodstrand, is it needs to be posted as special meeting?
I'm sorry?
It needs to be posted as a special meeting.
So we should just go ahead.
It's, yeah, that's.
Building, but we're not performing any type of a board function.
You, you still have to post it, I would defer to Sean. You know, I think that's what we found out when we were doing the dinner with the Woodstrand students, is it had to be posted as a special meeting out of an abundance of caution.
They actually said that as long as you're not working on the board stuff, there's actually provision, so like we could travel to or from someplace. Literally in the same vehicle, you don't have to.
No.
But it was not a bad thing to do it, so it doesn't matter to me.
To do it.
It's just to be cautious.
Yeah, that's.
That nobody talks about school business, and it's better to do it. It's better to do it and not need it than to need it and not do it.
Okay, yeah.
Function if you're not in the same room.
So just, it's, it's, it's like a CYA, so you don't have to, it's a special meeting, so it doesn't have to be called, you don't have to call it to order, just that there were three of us at the chamber. You would post it, just special board meeting, board members will be at X event and.
Oh, I see, okay, that makes.
Okay, you did Peggy?
Pardon me?
All right, Jason?
Uh, I got nothing at this time, thank you.
Lisa?
Uh, I had a few things, have we scheduled any snow makeup days?
We have not, we have met with the union, and they do not even want to talk about it till the end of February.
Is, at the same graduation?
I know, um, I am aware of that, um. Matters too, they just, they don't want to talk about it till the end of February, and so as long as we are where we're at right now, we. Won't have a problem with graduation, it would only be if we had. Well, we use a snow day, wouldn't matter, we have to have three more days for it to be an issue, really, because seniors can have. Five non, they have to have one hundred eighty days, but five to be non, like academic instruction, so if we get to a sixth day. Past graduation, that would be a problem.
So my third one would be regarding the calendar for next year, so we're still. The calendar for twenty three, twenty four school year.
Oh, that calendar's already, there's a tentative one, I think it's already on the. On, it's in the contract, but it's probably not on the website in clear.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a tentative one.
Is it possible to publish a tentative calendar? On the website?
We have a meet and confer with the next week. We haven't normally done tentative calendars because people want them to be the real calendar.
There's language that the PSC has in there that we gain any input from the PSC before. Anything is published, but we can work with them on it.
Oh, I had a question regarding the email that went out, well, and then substantive issue regarding the milk. The bad milk last week, um, I think we've talked about making sure the board is aware of issues and we're not hearing it in the community, um. I had a lot of people reach out to me regarding, hey, is the milk bad, where's the bad milk coming from, are we still getting bad milk? And the other issue that was raised is why, why are we having, because in the message that went out, it said, if your student's experiencing symptoms. Of drinking the bad milk, contact the building principal, so that gave us five points of contact, that's, you know. Then I guess the building principals get together and talk about the bad milk, um, as opposed to calling the district office and having one point of contact or the school nurse or.
The only place that there was an issue was here.
And that, so that would have been great to have in that email.
But because Derek Golden, I think, could say that there definitely couldn't have been anywhere else, so that's why it had to be more generic. And the kids that did have the issue, they were just here, um, but yeah, that was a.
The intent of it was to target the high school population, we knew of five kids that felt like they had symptoms. And so we were gonna do it on a case by case basis, but we decided that we would try and email parents. That email went to all buildings, um, and so even though it didn't affect the buildings, uh, every single building. Uh, if a student was feeling sick at the local building, usually the first point of contact is, is the building. So we're not getting flooded with phone calls at the district office. So, and then if it, if it, they want to speak with me, of course, that moves up the chain of command, but the first contact usually is at the building.
I think some clear, I think the message could have been clearer, and then I would have liked to received it as a board member with more clarifying information as opposed to. Getting it sent to me, and same with another issue that was in the district last week, um, just making sure that the board is aware. So that we're prepared to answer questions in an educated way from the community. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. And I don't have anything tonight, which takes us to future meetings, which was supposed to be a study session on the fifteenth, which is now a special meeting. That's gonna start at five. At Housel. Five thirty, I thought it was five to seven.
Yeah, I would probably post a special one at five thirty and then the regular one.
Okay, then we'll play it that way.
So the special meeting would be at seven?
No.
Because typically we have.
So that's right. Did think that one's true.
Because I think.
We tabled, let's see, uh.
Yeah, so we, we don't have to make it a special meeting next week, it could still be a regular work session, and that's such a.